We're all here except for Isaac. I'm gonna start the meeting, but we're gonna hold off the presentations. We'll go through the rest of the stuff because I want Committee Menachman here to hear it because everybody has to be properly informed about what's going on.
Okay.
Okay? Katie, or whenever you're ready.
I'm sorry. Adequate notice of this meeting is provided in accordance with the provisions of the Oak Street Public Meetings Act, NJESA 10:4-6, and published in the Asbury Park Press on January 10, 2017, and revised by email on September 11, 2017.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Coles.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Miller.
Here.
Committee Men Lichtenstein.
Here.
Committee Men Akerman.
Here.
Committee Men Delia.
Here. Okay. Tom?
I guess we'll go to workshop, street vacation.
Yep.
Minor Sinaso.
Thank you. Mayor and Committee Men, can I say on behalf of the Oak Street Joint Venture and its members, during the month of August, I put together a letter and delivered it to you in an outline to request to vacate portions of Nassau and Pinehurst for the purposes of creating pedestrian walkways and parks. The portions of, the portion of Pinehurst that we're asking to vacate, 100 percent of the lands would be immediately returned to the town. The people who would legally benefit from them would be the adjacent property owners, all of whom would, in advance of any formal vacation, tender to you quitclaim deeds returning ownership to the town. On Nassau, the CAFRA plan that was prepared years ago and submitted by the township for approval identified approximately 20 feet of Nassau Street as to be annexed to the lots that are adjacent to Nassau Street so that they become conforming lots. So on Nassau, the quitclaim would be for the 30 feet, I think it's the easterly side, the 30, on the easterly side. The Oak Street Joint Venture is sufficiently funded and is 100 percent committed to making all of the improvements. The improvements are generally a pedestrian walkway landscaped with benches and sitting areas for Nassau and a true linear park for Pinehurst. 100 percent of the cost of developing would be borne by Oak Street Joint Venture. The ownership would be the municipality and the access would be to all members of the community, the association, associated with the Oak Street community. So it would be a property that was available to all. The landscaping that is shown was with the assistance of Mr. Theobald, who was instrumental in the selection of the materials. The final design we would submit to you would be subject to your town professionals' review and comment. What we're showing you is the monster of a commitment that the Oak Street Joint Venture has. The bottom line would be any concern that the community would have that there would be the vacation of these lands and then become owned by third parties who would essentially have a windfall benefit. We could avoid that. Every member of the joint venture is prepared to execute the quitclaim deed in advance, deliver them to you so that immediately upon the vacation of the right-of-way can be restored to the township as a lot and can become an open space recreational lot. That is the request. May I ask you a question, Mayor?
Of course.
You suggest that there's gonna be some gridding between the town and the joint venture. Is that gonna be need, some written document to evidence that? Well, I would defer to you on that item. We would, to avoid any issue, tender the quitclaim deeds. And if the vacation were to be, if the vacation is about to be made, as I'm saying, I see there should be a written agreement between Oak Street Joint Venture and the town to memorialize their financial commitment with their.
That's why I asked you.
Yes, yes. Thank you. One step ahead of you. Yes, thank you.
Can I, in the chair, can I ask you a question? That's what we're here for. I was at a meeting at the DOT recently and we spoke about Route 9 from, from, from the lake, from the lake all the way to 70 and then out into Tom's River. And the DOT has some progress that they're making. In 2019, they're gonna be coming down and widening, well, not widening, but widening some intersections. They're gonna be doing some paving work, some turning lanes, and then they say that they have, I forgot what it's called, they've funded the first part, first step actually of Route 9 in this, the environmental study, in the future. So as we were there, we were talking about different intersections, and the intersection of Broadway and Route 9 came up. I happened to do, in the front of it, I happened to be personally, my business and bond with the property there, on the corner of Broadway and Route 9. And there was a question of a light being kicked around on Broadway and Route 9, a traffic light. I asked the DOT, like, where is it up to? They said they never received a request from the town. There was never any request made or nothing ever happened that would request. And I think there was a question of alignment, right? I forgot which the name of the development that crossed the street, but Presidential. Chateau? Okay, guys, let me try, I'm sorry. So Chateau Drive is right across the street, then it had to be aligned, then a light had to be set up. And then, I'm not sure where that cost was supposed to come from. I don't even know if it went with the development of the shopping center or if it went with the development of the Oak Street Corps. So when we say it's fully funded, is that part of, is that part of this funding? Because the DOT has.
Originally, I think it was supposed to be just the shopping center and then afterwards they switched it to.
But who's watching, where's it, where's it coming?
There are emails about it.
For what's happening.
So I'll answer the question what I know of. When this, when Oak Street, when the joint venture was created.
Sorry, name and address for the record, I apologize.
... 54th and 55th, it's the middle of the lane. When I, when the joint venture was being created, in order to develop the exit, it was a capital fund that the township received, there was a question that came up about, would the joint venture be willing to contribute some funds toward the traffic light on the corner of Broadway and Route 9? And they said, sure, well, definitely fund a proportionate share. Senator Singer was involved, and I believe the township passed a resolution a few years ago that the township was gonna contribute some funding to that as well. There is an ordinance to that effect. There was a meeting with the DOT and DOT was supposed to kick in some funds or tell Senator Singer something to that effect. But when they met again, they said that they couldn't. So I don't know.
They couldn't do it or they couldn't fund it?
I don't know. I wasn't, it was a township-related question, so I wasn't.
Was anybody from the town at this meeting?
Senator Singer was definitely at that meeting, Jeff Stager was at that meeting.
Jeff Stager was there?
Yes. And then after that meeting, the state had come in and said they were doing this global widening, and they said, well, then if they're doing everything, let them include the traffic signal on Broadway in that as well, because the way the DOT works is that, I mean, I think you all know, one of you if you're doing one thing, they can be doing another and the two will jive. So the overall fund is done and then the traffic signal, it's never gonna work. So the joint venture in front of the whole section on Route 9, I don't know if anybody drove by, it was widened, curb was put in, sidewalk was put in, but the joint venture did put funds aside to contribute towards the traffic light and those funds are still in place. So as soon as the township gets.
Are the funds, when you say the funds are in place, we have the money? When the funds are in place in the joint venture?
No, they're sitting in a trust.
Do you know how much?
They're actually sitting in a trust.
Do we know how much is committed to the traffic light?
What did we put in the budget?
So being that we don't know what the total.
Sorry, you have to, I think you have to say name and address for the record. Name and address for the record so we know.
Jacob Muller, 189. We were never given a final, in other words, the way it's structured in the township ordinance is we're supposed to give our proportionate share.
Percentage, but we don't know the cost of it?
Right, so originally we were told 25 percent is our proportionate share. Estimates were flying around at around $500,000 for the alignment plus the light. So again, we're actually waiting to hear back from you guys. And, you know, the.
That answers my question.
We have a line item in our, you know, in our estimate for, for the project.
Okay. Because my feeling on this joint venture, Mayor, as you know, it went through a couple of machinations, is if, you know, people who have homes, they are going to gain something, no question if lots are gonna be conforming as the attorney gain, but I think the town's gonna gain something of the grid, grid streets as opposed to circular driveways, the parks. And I think the improvement on Route 9 is essential. So, so I just wanna make sure that if we're going to go ahead and do this quitclaim deed and do this, that somebody get cracking and get in some idea from the DOT and make sure there's enough money in the trust for the improvement that's gonna be needed on Route 9. Because I feel like that's stalled because there's too many hands in the brew alcohol. I don't know, I don't, you know, maybe the senator thinks we're doing it, we think the senator's doing it, engineering thinks we're doing it, we think they're doing it, it's just, it's all over the place. So, so if I, you know, if you were going to put this up and for, for a vote, for this to go through, I would ask that we make sure that everything that's supposed to be funded, the parks, Route 9, everything along those lines, they're only their proportionate share is in place. And obviously, if the place that, that I spoke about before has to be funded, they should be funded too.
Mike?
Is this the traffic light that we have been discussing and that Mr. Klein has brought up on numerous occasions? Is that the same traffic light?
Mr. Klein has brought up a lot of things. I don't know. Which one? He's nodding.
He's been harping on Broadway and Route 9.
Then yes, then the answer is yes.
Okay. I have a question on the, on this. These are two streets. Pinehurst. Okay. Why is the, is it Pinehurst on the top?
Yes, sir.
Why is Pinehurst wider than the playground or the, whatever, whatever you wanna call it?
30 feet.
This is 50 feet, which is the full right-of-way. And this is 30 feet. And the reason is, on the CAFRA plan, all along this side of Nassau, it shows that 20 feet of the right-of-way is going to be annexed into those lots so that their non-conformity is cured. So that's, you're actually on the plan that was submitted to CAFRA all those years ago. So each of the lots that's on that, this side is a little bit undersized that's cured with that 20 feet.
So are you saying that disagreement on these undersized lots to get that, has been agreed on by this committee and everything?
I think it's more than that. This is what I asked about last time. And maybe, maybe you can explain this, if I may, Mayor. This is, remember, we got, we had a request about a piece of, a small piece of property in that area, I think at the last meeting that we discussed. Are those lots, right now, are they non-conforming lots? Let me rephrase my question. Are they approved non-conforming lots?
I'm gonna.
There are existing tents that have lots, but are not, there are 180 feet wide versus 200 feet. The tent, the visum, the artemis requires 10,000 square per lot, you want to create a lot, so you're 18,000 instead of 20,000 in order to create the two full lots.
So if the town would not give that benefit of the 20 feet, let's say we wouldn't do the east, we're not selling it to you because it's, it's a street vacation. And if we're not using the street, you know, why not do a vacation because, if it, if the grid is there? But here's my question, if, let's say the town would not give that 20 feet, would then each one of those lots be entitled under the non-conforming whatever to build something there because they have a right under the MOU to build?
I can add to that because it's gonna create an undersized, you're gonna create a conformant on undersized lots.
It, I mean, depend on each application. The big picture is that this, this was discussed when the CAFRA plan was created and it was identified that that, that short list of lots was in need of 20 feet. And it's actually shown this on the CAFRA plan, which is not a vacation plan, but on the CAFRA plan it showed that it was gonna.
That we signed off on.
That you submitted.
We didn't sign it off on, we submitted.
We submitted it. Okay.
Is there a street, is there a street above that?
Sorry about the colors, but throughout the long time I've already painted, I'm actually supposed to.
So where would be the street that's?
So this is, this is the grid, I think, kind of helps that.
What?
This is Route 9.
Right.
So coming in from Route 9 is actually three streets. There's Providence, there's Turnin', and there's Broadway.
Right.
Okay? Broadway is the one that goes directly through to.
Correct.
If you come down Broadway, you can turn down Parkfield, you can go down either Heavens, Grandhurst, or Wadsworth, or you continue down Broadway. This cuts through here, Argyle cuts through to Wadsworth as well, and also cuts through Heavens, Grandhurst, and Wadsworth, and all come through to Vine. So every one of these streets have sort of full circulation.
We're allowing for, okay, now where's, where's, where's the street that we want to vacate?
This is, this is one section of the street, see that we continue the grid through L. Meaning the grid goes.
So they're between those streets, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
But that street is still gonna go through every house.
This street is all going, this is all road that you're driving on. This section.
But in the middle of that is a paper street.
There'll be three small parks instead of one continuous.
Correct. And the same thing over here, you have your circular grid over here, and again you can circle around over here, but it's this section that goes.
And what you're saying is one side of that street is an undersized lot.
On this side.
And you're proposing.
Just this.
Yes. And you're proposing that, under the agreement, or under, not the agreement, under the question that you put in, is the CAFRA?
Yeah.
How many lots are actually gaining?
It's, it's actually 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
And if we don't approve that, then they can't build there. So what you're saying is we're doing.
And I think they would end up going with a variance, is probably what it would be.
Yeah, slightly undersized, that's a point for variance, okay? Just seems.
Everything in this development so far has been fully conforming and.
Mike, see, that's what I asked last time, there's something called a buy-sell letter. From what I remember from my days on the board, the MOU on municipal land use law, the municipal land use law requires that you make a reasonable attempt by either trying to buy or sell or acquire through vacation property that would make your lot more conforming. But if your lot, if you've made that attempt and are not successful, you can't tell somebody they're not allowed to build on their lot. They may have to build something a little smaller. So if there's grids anyway, and, and it's not, I don't think it's gonna minimize, it's not gonna go from seven houses to one house, you know what I'm saying? So they might move a lot line, maybe it will be six houses. You follow what I'm saying? If it goes, I don't know, is it?
Okay, so, so what I'm asking then, we're vacating the whole street, and you're giving portion of that street to the property owner that owns that undersized lot?
Committee, the vacation by law, right down the middle of the street, half goes to Eastside. That's the law.
Those property owners will not be giving us a quitclaim deed.
They'd be giving, they'd be giving you five feet back.
There's no money.
Mayor? They'd be, they'd be giving you five feet back.
They would be giving us a quitclaim deed. They'll be giving a, once they get it on vacation, they'll be giving us a quitclaim deed for what they got. But they'll, they'll be giving us less than what the other ones are because they're keeping some of that footage.
And we would, we would do all quitclaim deeds in advance, tender to you, Mr. Henshaw or Mr. Seck.
Yeah, I just wanted, can I just point one other thing out, because I know what the town sent me to pass? This, this is where, this is where Austin, this street, which would have been a through street if it would have been developed as a road. This is actually a street, and that's how this all circulates, okay? This over here goes straight into Presidential. So this is never getting put through because Presidential has a house right there. On this side, this is a school site. This street no longer exists, so this is never going through, this is a school. So essentially, this, if it would be developed, would just be additional circulation for what you already have the circulation.
And this end of the park goes right into your.
This goes straight into the park. This is where your soccer fields are. So this is the parking lot, this is the fence line, and this is the parking. So this would go straight into the park, which we're proposing to keep a walking path. And if the township would want us to actually open it and grade it, there is a, I don't remember the hill here, we can open it straight to the park.
So that is.
It is, it goes straight into the park space, there is a hill, if the township would want, we would have to probably put some small table or something there. And again, over here, this is owned by Testar, and it won't ever be able to be connected. So we're not, we're not taking away what can be a future mansion because it's already gone.
They're both at ends on both ends, is it?
This one, Argyle, does come through eventually to connect to the school site and something else, but then here.
It comes out, it was at the Oak.
And then it wiggles around and it goes to Oak. So this one, which we did develop as a road, it's actually paved and done, does come through.
Question. Okay. On the landscaping and maintenance, so with the property being turned back to the township, it would be, it would be, it would become our responsibility to maintain it then?
It would.
Right, so what I'm asking for, I had my own landscape company for 15 years, and reviewing what I saw there, I like to see less grass and more mulch and permanent landscaping so my guys don't have to come in there and do that much work.
We couldn't, because the plan brought you.
Gladly work with the township professionals to get the landscaping the way you like.
You kinda had Theobald through the work, he's pretty conscientious, he can work with the township on whatever trees that they, that would be the most resistant to.
Okay. I think that all the points are made. The grids, the grids we truly preserve. Another part of the grid is, the grid is for movement of the community members. Most of the community members are gonna move in automobiles, but by maintaining this as a linear grid, you've got an opportunity for walking, strollers, bicycles, so the grid's still intact.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry, I remember, it could be it was Mr. Klein, but I don't remember who it was, I remember there were questions about sidewalk came up. Is there, is every single house?
I know your question.
Okay, you know better than I do, Brian.
But this plan, when this property got a subdivision approval to split this lot into, into deplanned lots, they were required to continue the sidewalk past that property frontage 25 feet until here. And the same thing with this building. So when this house is built and this house is built, this gap is gonna be gapped with sidewalk. And that's the requirement for all properties that are bought.
So any, any, any house that gets CO or under this plan to get approval will have sidewalk. There will be no roadway without curb and sidewalk.
There's curb already there. If you drive down the street, the curb is all in.
In the future, there will be no roadway.
In the future, the only areas that will not have sidewalk are properties that were not part of the joint venture and that didn't pay in and didn't do any work. And those are Lori Lee's lots primarily.
They will have sidewalk because we're not gonna, we're not gonna allow them to build without a sidewalk.
We can, that, right.
Our construction, if I build my own one.
100 percent, eventually they will. They won't have.
How many lots is that?
In the next year. They're actually here in gray.
How many linear feet of sidewalk?
So it's actually, what you have.
Oh, it's a lot.
It's over here, along this side of the street, over here, it's these two. You have sidewalk here, we have sidewalk here, these two.
Can you, can you show me again which one?
And this one was, this one, right, this is the one that was brought out, and this one's being developed now, is this really the first lot? Who owns it? Yeah.
No, that's the last lead's.
The lead owns here, okay.
So how, so can you show me which are the lead's lots? I can't see.
This one?
Yeah, one.
These two? She owns this, but this is ultimately.
She owns this as Lori Lee's.
And she owns this.
Lori Lee's.
So, so I have a question, the other side.
This is hers?
So is there any place that there will be no sidewalk on two sides? Or is she always on one side?
No, she's always on the one side.
So there will always be sidewalk on two sides?
Correct.
There's always sidewalk on one side.
On one side.
I meant on one side, right.
On one side, not on both, correct. The question is, these little areas, she's, there's, I mean.
By the entrances where the primary issue is actually, because I don't use a sidewalk.
There's not a sidewalk on here, this, for some reason, I don't know why.
Where is that? Broadway up to Route 9?
Yes, this, for some.
Is there any reason you wouldn't just fund it to put sidewalk in there?
What's in there now? I think there's utilities and whatnot there. I don't know if you can get it in. What you have, what, what, most people were assuming is gonna end up happening is they're gonna end up crossing and walking into the parking lot straight into the retail center. If they're gonna go down Route 9, I'm assuming they're gonna.
If it's possible to put a strip of sidewalk there, would you, would be at first to funding that?
I don't believe so, but you know, with the shopping center, I think it should contribute as well, I mean, it's.
I, while I know, while I know those people well, I agree with you. Whoever, whoever has a percentage in it, absolutely, the light, the slot, whatever it is, if you do it, it should be part of that thing.
You might have to go onto that property to wiggle around the light and the traffic, because I do know that.
I could give you, I could give you that phone number. But I think, I really do think that, that if you're gonna be doing that, especially if there's gonna be a traffic light there, there should be sidewalk up to that traffic light.
I don't think I understand.
And, and if we're doing a traffic light, I mean, you, all you have to do is take the percentage of the money you're spending on the traffic light and throw a little bit more for the sidewalk in, you won't even notice the difference. I mean, you're talking, what are you talking about over there? Maybe 50 feet of sidewalk?
This from here to here? No, this is, this is.
Where's it starting from? Go back. Okay.
This is, this is 70 feet acres.
Sorry, my mistake.
You're looking at it like this, but it's, it's.
Okay, sorry, my mistake on the calculation. I think that sidewalk should be included in the streetlight as part of the, that streetlight goes in, I think there should be sidewalk up to it and the percentages should be divided accordingly. Whoever is supposed to pay into the percentage should pay.
Mayor, just ask for, I agree with everything that.
Nobody else seems to be chatting tonight.
Saying, I just wanna sum it all up, that all properties of the Oak Street Venture are gonna have sidewalks.
100 percent.
Okay. And curbs?
Yes.
Those are in there. There is.
Okay, just, I wanted on the record so we know, because we're, we're getting feedback all the time that we're allowing.
So it's a little complicated, I think there's a little background that's needed to understand why it's evolved the way it has. This wasn't a major subdivision. This is essentially 50 or 60 people on all land in a large area.
Okay.
And as a result, you know, each person that comes to develop his individual property is responsible for his individual sidewalk. In a case when you haven't made, you know, what the joint ventures tried to accomplish in general is in places where there's something that's needed to be done collectively, such as a basin, which would be a primary example, then something joint venture has taken care of in the roads, obviously, it'll be completed, you know, entirely. But wherever there's a person that has an individual lot, obviously that should be his responsibility and has been left to, as, as we move through the process and each person develops his particular parcel of land, they're then, you know, they're then installing these sidewalks as they go. That's kind of what's, it's common.
I have one more question, and maybe this is more for the attorney. I remember years back, the, there was something going on and a developer wanted some action. And the township said if he wanted that, he had to put curbs in sidewalks. Is that still in effect? Does that law still affect that, that gray area? If we deemed that they had to put curbs in sidewalks, could they, would we make them do it?
If they wanna develop the property, they have to put in the sidewalks.
Just if they wanted to develop the property? What if they just want, there are just things.
Township has the right to put in sidewalks anywhere they want to assess the property on it that hasn't been done in over 20 years.
Correct.
Township has been putting in the sidewalks. So that's a decision for the committee that's outside the scope of what we're talking about here.
Okay. Well, I agree with Committee Men that I would like to see you put those sidewalks in and finish it up to its whole. it up to its whole.
Like I said, I think the best way to do that is when you look at the joint venture, whatever, tie the sidewalk cost of the light. Whatever percentage people are putting in for the light should come along with the sidewalk because that's when people are gonna start crossing when there's a light there. I mean, I'm sure they cost now also, but it'll direct people there.
Gentlemen, this has, this has been in front of us for a while. We've said no before. I'd like to know the feeling of the committee about whether we want to proceed with this or not.
Can I say something?
One quick comment since I let other folks talk. Name and address for the record.
William Klein, 189, I told you that. About the sidewalks, you know, it's mentioned to me about the sidewalks. The problem is that when they tied in the Oak Street joint venture, this Menasha Frank Road property, so on Route 9, they did put in sidewalks, but all the roads going in, there's no sidewalks. Makes no sense, you're putting thousands of ones all day, not thousands.
Well, that's what we were talking about a second ago, was to...
But that's Broadway.
See how that...
All the other streets don't have either, they took away the map, but all the other streets don't, doesn't have...
Which streets, please?
I'll show you.
On the entrance ways, I think he means on the entrance ways off of 9 into the development or not, not gonna be paved.
I'll show you over here. This is the Route 9. This doesn't have sidewalks, only on one side over here, but this doesn't have nothing, not on either side.
That's what we were just talking about.
So you're talking over here on this one. This one doesn't have sidewalks either. This one doesn't have sidewalks either when you come in. It's a span of like 100 feet, 150 feet. It makes no sense.
Those lots are owned by individual people.
This is Lori Lee's, Lori...
This is where the issue is, when somebody develops a road.
A second.
They develop the road.
But those roads now are, are developable road, are developable lots?
They're developed.
These are new roads that they would just put in.
Sorry, the lots.
Yes, they are developable.
Are they developed?
Lori Lee's, no, Lori Lee's owns them.
So when they come in, they have to put in sidewalk?
The problem is when you develop a road, and it could be it's not their fault, but when you develop a road and you don't, when a development puts in a big development and he says in the beginning, "I will develop this paper street," and he doesn't put in sidewalks, it's not safe passage. So it's automatically going to be your responsibility to put it in.
Well, again, we can assess property owners.
Right.
That's something that the township committee needs to look at, and I will push on that one. Thank you.
And as far, and as, just as a short comment about the paper street, the vacation day of the streets.
Since that's what we're...
I just don't understand, this is my question. You could have the paper streets existing the way it is in the township containing, why do you have to vacate it?
Because they're gonna pay for it.
Pay for what?
How do you, you can't put a park on a vacated, on a vacated street.
Whatever they're doing, they could. You could put sidewalks, actually is, they got a waiver for the sidewalks. Now they're saying is they're putting it in, you know?
It's a right of way, I don't want you to put a park on a right of way.
You could put anything you want in the right of way except the bars.
That's why we're not landscaping, are you?
You are.
It's an opportunity to take...
How?
I, I take your point.
There's only one small section that they're putting in, like the bars or whatever. You know, the rest of it is just...
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate your comments.
Put a park in a paper street.
I gave you the floor. Isaac, yes or no, do you want to move ahead on this?
I'm fine with it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Tenash? I put it on for...
Yes.
John, you're only first, 2019.
Okay, make sure it's all for the...
Can I just ask?
Ordinance, right?
That the ordinance language should be very clear that we can vacate the streets when all the conditions are met, that we've discussed.
We'll go to work getting those quick cleanings assembled and over to you.
October 18th. It's a Wednesday.
Is this a single adoption or first and second?
First and second.
First and second.
So you'd be in October and then November 2nd.
Good. We'll make sure that before October 18th, these are...
Tom, can I ask you to reach out to Senator, through the chair, to Senator Singer's office and find out what we need to do to make sure that Broadway is included in the, or reach out to the DOT, what do we need to do to make sure that that intersection is included in the 2019 project that they told us that they're doing? Make sure that the streets line up, that the light comes in, that it's wide enough, and whatever they're gonna do to the other intersections. The DOT said they're waiting to hear from us, so you just need to call them and ask them what they want. I don't know what they want.
Do you expect to get an answer by the second reading of its ordinance?
No, that's why I just said that.
Okay.
That's why I just said by the second reading, we should say we can vacate this when everything is met. And then we'll know what the price is, we'll know how much money has to be in escrow. So it might not be at the second reading, it might be a little later. You don't vacate the streets until that's done.
I think you'd be an optimistic if you had an answer from the DOT.
Let's give it a shot.
Don't worry about it, don't worry about it. Thank you for the courtesy of going early on your agenda. Thank you, good night.
Say, Tom, can I?
You get me that block and line?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, our next free vacation, Evergreen, Josh.
Whoa. Hello.
One and I.
This will be very easy. Famous words.
Thank you.
You said that in an off... Say it again?
Yeah, there's a comedy night tonight from Channel Commerce. I wasn't telling.
I'm gonna be as quick and clear as possible.
Good, because we have about a two-minute attention span.
Amazing, perfect. A minute longer than mine is. This application was brought in front of the planning board about a year ago. This application, in our opinion, is fully compliant, conforming, no variances. However, this application has across the street from, on Locust, the cross street from Evergreen Boulevard is a development called Harrogate. Harrogate came out at the planning board meeting and met us privately numerous times. Since then, asked us not to open up Evergreen, where we're showing it to be opened. Where actually makes sense to be opened. This application did not need any streets to be vacated, this application does not need any variances, this is a buy right application. Deemed complete by the planning board, not yet approved. We never went through with the final hearing, we held off until we dealt with Harrogate. We spoke to Harrogate, we met them probably half a dozen times. We came up with an option, which is in front of you, which does the following. Here's Harrogate, this was Evergreen. We're not talking about vacating Evergreen. We pulled that road over about 150 feet east and coming out with cul-de-sac on Evergreen. Harrogate actually gave us property to do this. They, the request from Evergreen, from Harrogate was to move entrance over and put a 50-foot buffer or 40-foot buffer along Locust Avenue, a wooded buffer.
Forty or 50 is, 10-foot difference there.
We're negotiating, but there'll be a buffer, a wooded buffer along the Locust, Locust Street. And it'll be whatever Harrogate agrees to, because they had, it's their land, they're actually giving us a lot along, along Locust Street, so they have to sign an agreement, they have to sign owner's authorization, have to notarize owner's authorization, they have to be fully agreement, they have to agree to do this.
Shu, it's not clear on the plan, it's, Evergreen runs, runs into their open, their entrance?
Right into their entrance.
Directly across the street.
Directly. And actually, if you look on, on this plan, you see, the survey, the survey picked it up.
Harrogate is still asking us not, I should say, is asking us to vacate Evergreen. The issue I had is that our engineering department said not to, and I don't know that we've ever gone against our engineering department's recommendation on something like that.
Correct. However, tonight, we're not here to talk about Evergreen, we're here to talk about the two paper streets.
Well, how is the property that they're gonna give you affected if Evergreen's not vacated? I thought that was contingent.
They're willing to give us the property anyway, whether you vacant Evergreen or not, but we do need, we would need these two stub streets which you have there vacated. The new road comes up right here and the bulb comes out here. Just for the record, Jeff Stager, your engineer, we approved, agreed that vacating these two stubs do not affect anything for the town. We showed this to public works, they were okay with it. We showed it to the fire commissioner, they were okay with it. We sent it to the bus, the LT...
LSTA.
LSTA, they were okay with it. So we showed it to every agency that we could have thought that would have affected. They're fully conforming streets, 32-foot wide roads with a full bulb at the end. But we do imagine in the future, where the Evergreen gets, Harrogate has a vision. Harrogate would like Locust to have some sort of wooded buffer along, along Locust Street.
Across Evergreen.
Across from, across from where their entrance is.
Right, and crossing Evergreen.
Crossing Evergreen, that's what they like. We're not here, our request, which we've submitted to the clerk's office, which my client has paid for and set it all up, has not for Evergreen. We're not saying don't vacate Evergreen, we're happy for the committee to vacant Evergreen, however, that's not our request. Our request is to these two stub streets, and if the, Harrogate is willing to back us and say at least do these two streets, my client is gonna develop the property, as any developed property, liquid property will be developed. The question is, will it be developed the way Harrogate does not like or a way that Harrogate does like? It's just, that's the question. And it's right up to the committee, because we cannot develop it the way Harrogate wants without you vacating those two stub streets of Ferry and June. Either way, we need to know from the committee.
So what happens if Evergreen gets vacated? What happen in the future? What happens to that cul-de-sac?
The cul-de-sac will remain. What can happen in the future is other landowners, which we're actually designing, other roads right now, June Street...
The new street, right, that's the bubble.
This is gonna come down Evergreen and make it, and turn onto June.
Got it. So the cul-de-sac's gonna end up going away, it's gonna be a through street.
It's gonna be a through street.
And maybe the front stub of Evergreen will be vacated.
Correct, correct. These lots are, I believe, under the ownership of Dr. Preschel, and there's a number, number of people working on different designs.
If, if nothing ever happens, then it will just be...
There'll be a fully conforming cul-de-sac, which the township engineer, Signville Fine said it's a fully conforming cul-de-sac, and he's okay with that. The roads are fully conforming.
And you're not, you're not building houses on the cul-de-sac that'll prevent it from becoming a through street?
No. No, no, not that, is this...
Cul-de-sac is gonna be in Evergreen's right of way.
Right.
Oh.
And we're giving some land out of our land to make it large enough. Evergreen's a big right of way and we're adding a little extra land.
It's an engineering, it's an engineering question.
Jeff had emailed the mayor, myself.
Makes sense.
Just that you're saying that's okay.
That makes sense to me.
Mayor, may I ask a couple of questions?
Of course.
Your client owns all this property? Or does he own all the property?
Oh, all properties surround, my clients are, all, all surround these properties around, around this.
They own this? Do they own this?
No, no, they own, they own these lots.
That's all.
This is Harley Davidson, which runs on 70, and they own all these.
Okay, so now, what is he planning for here? He, well, he doesn't own those.
He doesn't own those?
Okay.
And Evergreen can never really make it up to 70. I can't imagine DOT's gonna allow, give a light on Vermont a few hundred feet away. I, I don't imagine they're gonna allow no thing on to Evergreen cutting right through. Is it a possibility?
Regardless, what about Temple?
We're over here, they're gonna join in with other temples which are being built right now further down out here in Bell's neighborhoods.
So you're, you're building, you're building homes all through here, onto 72, that's not commercial?
No, 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 just this. Here's, here's Locust.
Yeah.
And these are streets. We're stopping right here. These lots, off of 70?
Yeah.
We don't own, we don't have any control.
Right, but I'm saying, Temple is one of the street that...
Temple, you're not...
Temple is up...
Right up the top, just, it actually comes out along with Evergreen, through Highway 70.
Mm-hmm. We don't, we don't have any frontages on Temple, so none of the lots we're on.
Right, but how is Temple gonna be accessed?
It can be accessed.
By Evergreen.
By Evergreen.
That's why we can't ever vacate Evergreen?
I'm not...
All right, as long as Harrogate understands that, so...
Harrogate's aware that we're pursuing just these two streets and they're signing off on this.
So they're gaining...
If they don't sign off on this, we can't, we can't be heard by the planning board, they don't, they don't sign off on it. They have to notarize it and so, sign off on it.
So you want a portion of Ferry Street and June Street vacated?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
They back up to the cycle place?
Harley Davidson, yeah. Right, right, just what's, what's in there?
Now, I have another question. You're taking and bringing them out to, to Locust Street, correct?
To Evergreen, this here is Evergreen. Eventually, it may hit Locust. And that's not...
You're not coming out, then you're not, are you putting anything close to the development that's on the south side, senior development?
No.
You're not touching anything by then?
No, no, no.
We have enough problems with them right now with parking?
No, this is not...
And Covington's further down.
Okay, I just want to make sure in my mind, I'm trying to figure out how far down that is. Okay.
This is really a design that Harrogate and ourselves draw together. They're professionals, our engineers, they spend, give numerous, numerous meetings. I've been in the Harrogate conference room, I've probably half a dozen times drawing and designing, we've been constantly playing until, this is what, this is what they want us to do. I'm sure they'll be here next month talking to you and convincing you about vacating Evergreen, and I'll let them make their case. Make sure they do a good job.
Thank you for working at Covington.
So, I have a question. This is, has to go to the planning board, obviously, we don't want to vacate this until you go to the planning board, so you're looking for us to tell you that we will do it.
Correct.
Just on a technicality, when do you expect to be heard at the planning board?
Next, we're, we're ready, we've gone through tech review and we'll be at the planning, this is deep from the beginning of the planning board. We'll be on in about a month.
So, so Mayor, just because we're getting closer to the end of the year, if you're okay with it, I would have no problem putting it on for first reading and then not second read it until they get their approval at the planning board. Not wait, because then we're gonna end up going into next year.
Mike?
I have no problem with it. I, I, I was just worried, again, as with the other one, about breaking up the flow. I don't see where you're breaking up the flow here.
And there was a lot of confusion about this.
It was, yeah, it was, it was a lot of confusion and I think this is what they, what, Harrogate, this is what Harrogate wants. We have, our other plans are deemed complete as well, we can, we're sort of holding two different sets of plans by the planning board, and one of them has to go forward, so this is what Harrogate wants. Actually, they're giving land towards this, so they're, trust me, they're not giving a thing. They go over our plans, we cop the bottom. I get, I get review letters from our, from Remington Vernicle, I get review letters from the professionals.
Isaac, what do you think?
I'm fine with it, I'm, I'm happy that they're satisfying...
I'll allow you one question, Mr. Klein, since we're in...
Just for the sake of, the grid was messed up in Lakewood and I don't want it to happen, continuously happen again. When they will go to the planning board, Evergreen, they'll have to get a waiver of developing that. Is, that's how we get the grid, and they're keeping, they're giving them the waivers and we were fighting that, that they should stop giving it. So technically, if they have to go to the, to the planning board, even the frontage is not on that property, they have to develop it by your township ordinance. So technically, you're giving like an okay for the planning board to start doing this behavior again that we try to stop them of doing, and you're doing it right over here.
Just, just to explain that, in this case, what will happen is Harrogate will actually come to the planning board and will step up and say, "We live across the street from that, we're invested in Lakewood."
That's, that's the point that he was making, but I understand.
I understand, and therefore be...
I'll allow you a question as well.
The design is all into Allenhurst Boulevard in Lakewood. Everything's fine, just, I actually emailed Tenash about the name of the road several months back, maybe even more than that. Being that...
Zine's Way? Is that what you want?
No, no, being that, that Evergreen, they're not thinking it's ever gonna really No, no, being that Evergreen, they're not thinking it's ever gonna really cross the 70. As you know, Josh also has a hotel on video. There isn't Evergreen Boulevard or Avenue right over there. I was just wondering, just for the sake of emergency services, if it could be renamed.
Mike, it possibly could be renamed. My concern isn't the fact that it can never go to 70. My concern is that Temple Street is up at the top. They're gonna need to be able to get out.
So... I'm not talking about that, I just...
Yes, I understand your point about Evergreen, so, all right.
Yeah, there's your remarks as well, just see now.
You weren't here, but everybody seems to be in favor of allowing this to go forward pending a planning board approval.
Mayor, follow you.
Right out the door.
Thank you.
We'll go forward to both of them.
Thank you.
We'll have a meeting with Harrogate next week, so I'll fill you in.
Very much.
At least they want us.
All right, I guess Harold will handle that too.
Yeah, prepare for first read and maybe hold on for until...
Yeah.
All right, next, the state makes us go through our best practices, so then we can send it off to the state, we're done with it. So briefly, I'll go over what we had to address this year, sorry, realizes. We had to address the filing of the negotiating contracts, the use of useful vehicles, tax assessment, notification of appeals, maintain a website, have our town valuation over 85 percent, which we just did, revow. Through financial disclosure statements, we did outside employment, discuss authorities, add audit findings, monitor pilots, audit done on time, debt statement on time, develop strategy for permanent financing, follow bidding process, use friendly budget, budget adopted on time, health benefits, certifications, waivers, overtime pay, sick leave, longevity, personnel management. So that's what we had to address this year.
And they'll change it all on us next year.
And they'll change it again next year. Are there any questions from anybody? No, good. Katie, good?
Just thank you, thank you for keeping us on track with that.
So I can go ahead and file it with the state now, we're good?
Yes. And I have to sign it in Bill too, right, you and Bill?
Right, I have to put it in on the computer and then it'll be electronic signature.
All right, number two, everybody has his Brick Street, they're looking for a vacation, a move in streets.
It's actually, as Tom just mentioned, I have a little bit of knowledge on this. This isn't just plain vacation, on the contrary, but they're actually doing this, it's a realignment. The way it would have to be done is through a vacation of one and then creating the other. Basically, they have, if you look on sheet number three, the orange is where the old street used to be and the, and they're showing you where they just want to move it sideways to. Remington Vernick's original report said you're creating a T-intersection, but when I went to speak to Jeff, it actually, I showed him, it's an existing T-intersection now and they're just moving it over. So it's not that they're creating a T-intersection, T-intersection is actually there. And that's why I asked that it should be brought back.
Do you remember what the reason for moving it was?
Yeah, because they're creating the T-intersection. I don't know why, didn't pick it up the first time around.
There's also wetlands on the original Brick Street.
Correct. The street would never be able to go through, that's correct, Tom. The original street would never be able to go through because of wetlands. Now, here's the complication that I spoke to Steve about. If you go ahead, now this is actually, this is the planning board approval, which is why they're putting the street in. If you go ahead and just vacate the street, then who's to say they're actually gonna put the street in? And this is something we were grappling with, meaning, I'm fine with this, this is a great idea, this is fine, this works out well with me, they're putting a street through, which is not there, this is a great idea. The question is, can we go ahead and vacate the street subject to them putting in the other street? How does that, what's our guarantee for them to be putting in this other street?
How would they vacate the street once over the U-Dies?
Right.
And I drafted, what you've attached to is the ordinance, the proposal ordinance, we haven't put it up on notice yet, but paragraph three of the next-to-last-whereas clause on the first page of it says, "The vacation specifically contingent on MCAA, the Apple Canteras, and D.C., dedicating the subdivision of New Brick Street as to..."
Sal, thank you.
...the way we can handle it, let's prove that. Gives us the right to undo if they don't finalize the proposal.
I'm good with that.
Mike?
I don't see any problems with the truth, Elijah.
Isaac?
Cool, as long as he's gonna replace it.
Yep.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Moving on, we'll be down to property. The only one, number two, I'm still working on that, there was some issues with property, so I'll have to bring that back. There's a firehouse. They had asked that, they wanted to build another firehouse and they're looking for a piece of property from the township. I've enclosed in the sheet that I supplied to you, two parcels that they want us to take a look at for that.
So one is, I think that's the property where the school used to be?
1536 Massachusetts Avenue is one, where we have to subdivide to give them some property, because that's just too big to give the whole thing.
I think that's a great place for a firehouse.
I know it's a great place for a firehouse, I think that should be an emergency services area. It's a great place for a firehouse, it's a great place for additional base for whether it's ambulances, both, any volunteer service that also...
All those noisy trucks and sirens and... Be careful. I agree, I think that that's the perfect place. I talked to a lot of folks out there about doing it. I mentioned the fact that we'd like to take part of that property and set it aside for fire or emergency services.
Yep.
While I think they would prefer to see it open and just left alone, very few people had any real objection. In fact, they thought it was a good idea to have something like that so far, so I would recommend that we go with the Massachusetts. The Shore Rock Street, do we actually have the property there? I thought everything over there was put into trust?
No, so we told the state that we're going to carve that piece out, right, Harold?
This isn't part of the acreage, it was done like 20 years ago?
No, this is...
The whole side of Shore Rock between the Home Depot and...
You won't remember the block and lot number, but it's 524th, 28th, Lot 7301. Isn't that the one that we, one of the ones that we asked the state?
With the state planning board?
Yeah.
No, the only one we asked about was up where Family Food really...
No, we, I went through, I gave, I spoke to you...
Look, I mean, it's moot point, because we're gonna go with Massachusetts, so...
This was, this was...
Oh, they only want one?
No, no, they want Shore Rock.
They want two?
Yes, okay, whatever it says. May I, Chair?
Oh, I was just telling you they wanted one, okay.
To the chair. This property on Shore Rock, when I was on the board and before I came on the board, this was discussed. The only reason why the board didn't pursue it at that time was it's not, when it's built, and it's gonna have to be built down the road, and that's why they're bringing it up to you now, it's gonna be a paid house. There's no way you can get volunteers to that house, get a truck out, so...
This on the east side of Shore Rock Street then?
I believe it is.
Yeah, no, so I was aware of all the property to the west between the Home Depot.
This is one of the properties that I have to make sure that we tell the state we want to carve out of that conservation easement.
Well, that is coming soon, then later, and that's why they're proceeding with it. They have an excellent business administrator that's planning that out.
All right, Tom, I guess we're okay with those two, providing we can get the okay for, well, 50, well, they wanted two, I was just...
No, no, just one, they sent two pieces of property for...
Not a quarter of what Mike just told us.
No, they want both. One's all the way up on Cross Street, the one's all the way down on Shore Rock. Are you gonna fly a helicopter?
That's not what I was told, but okay.
Well, that's what the letter said.
Verify it with them and if they say they only want one, go with Massachusetts for now.
They, they, they talked to me just the other day, that they're looking at the back...
All right, as long as the one on Shore Rock Street can be done.
Not new, it's just something that's coming back.
But again, if we convey it to them free, you know, for a dollar, we need to convey, with the understanding that a firehouse is gonna go there.
That's correct. If not, it's back to the township.
Okay, anything else for open session, guys?
Yeah, I have something, I have something.
I'm going to adjourn this session now.
I have something for...
Matters of personal...
No, hold on a second.
Katie, hang on, Katie, hang on. With the road restoration ordinance that we did, the way it reads right now, if someone does a three-by-three road opening, they dig a trench three-by-three, they have to bond $15,000 approximately.
That's why we held off on it.
I understand, so I want...
We want to redo it.
Yeah, but that particular point is currently, that's currently the law. Right, I want that, I want that changed, that, in other words, it's just an insurance...
The one we were proposing, change that.
They did change it?
Yeah, but we didn't do it because of a different issue.
Okay, fine, I just have to make sure that's...
And I do have one more thing.
Well, we're gonna continue COs for those people, right?
We could put, yes, of course.
You mean TCOs?
Yeah, they've been doing it. I just want to make sure that, I don't care if they bond whatever it costs to redo that three-by-three trench, for us to redo that three-by-three trench, but not 10 or 15,000 dollars for two years, you know?
Yeah.
Anyway, I have one more thing. I received a letter from a Melvin Faganbaum, I don't know if you know, and he wanted to buy some property from us, Block 263 or Block 258, and it's near the Crystal Lake Preserve area and...
It's in the Crystal Lake Preserve near?
Right near the area, but he wanted to do it to add to his property so he could build something. And, you know, I, it's not my decision to make, but I just feel...
I haven't been in favor of selling any of our property for residential uses. I just want to do it for schools, because we have to, and industrial, so I'm one of five.
That's all part of the Crystal Lake, right off to the Crystal Lake Preserve.
Yeah, and he said, if not, you want to buy his property, and I already said no for that, you know?
Yeah, if we can add it to the Crystal Lake Preserve.
We want as much open space out there as we can get, so if we already own the property, even though it's not in the preserve, I say keep it if it rejoins the preserve. You guys want to sell it, sell it.
I didn't see the property. I don't think we own any property along the Crystal Lake Preserve that's not in the Crystal Lake Preserve.
That's what he said.
No, it's not, it's not in the Crystal Lake...
Is it, what zone is it in? What's its zone for?
It's adjoining the Crystal Lake Preserve.
One second, what's its zone for?
Is your computer still on?
Yes.
CLP, can you print that out?
It doesn't say.
Let's see what zone it's in. I have a feeling it's in the CLP zone.
Here's what she wrote. Block 258, we can't sell it. It's not owned by the township, and the other property around it, Requester, is Block, it's 75 acres and makes up a large portion of the CLP.
It's Crystal Lake Preserve, Tom.
Yeah.
CLP is the Crystal Lake Preserve.
Correct.
So it is in the Crystal Lake Preserve.
And can't sell?
Well, when you look at it, it doesn't look like it, but...
So what we did was, when we made that preserve, when we made that zone, we actually made the zone the preserve, the same thing.
Okay, I know, it's right here, I see it, but it's not, one property is right next to it, not in it, but it's right next to it.
All right, anything else for open?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was working with the, regard to the COA, the 2.5 percent, trying to get it back here. I did receive a letter, it was too close to get onto the agenda, with regard to some of the buildings going up in the, commercial buildings being put up right now, obviously, we're too close to the agenda. The problem is that our next township meeting is kind of far from now. What I'd like to do is have the opportunity to show it to you, speak it over with you, and show it to the manager. It could be, we may have to get in touch with committee members prior to next meeting to make a decision what we'd like to do. Obviously, we could formalize it at the next township meeting, but we certainly...
Oh, we just hired the attorney to see if we can get it, so where are we at?
This will, right, no, hire the attorney to see if we can get it back to here, but with regard to, I think some of the questions that are arising right now is, the 2.5 percent, how is it gonna be, how is it gonna be calculated? I think that's what part of the question's going to be.
Finally, we had that same attorney give us a recommendation.
They're paying it to the state now, it's just a matter of us receiving.
Correct, but we're the ones, we're the ones going, we have to make the determination, our...
Well, it's calculated as high as we can.
Well, it's going to...
It's undervalued property, we're gonna go in.
Whatever we need to do that we can keep that money here to help Lakewood residents get affordable houses. So, whatever, if we need to do something, Steve approves it, we have to do a special meeting, we'll do that.
Got it.
Anything, anything, anything else?
Nada.
All right, motion to go into executive session?
Some second.
By my second, by Mayor, any discussion, roll call, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We're going in for matters of personal...
We will not be discussing any more issues if we get out of closed session before 7:30.
Okay.
It's not working.
It's not working.
It's not, it has to warm up. When the red light goes on up there, then it's working.
Bring the torch.
Mr. Klein, look for the red light.
Don't go into the light, you don't stop at red lights.
Oh, the light is on.
We're on here.
Yep.
Seven forty.
The sound is not good.
That's one of my concerns, because right now the sound is going through the speaker up there. Have it, have time to have it plugged into the township's sound system.
I'll go to all that.
Hiya, good to see ya.
This, okay, that picks up, so...
Okay, let's get started, please.
Adequate notice that this meeting is for provided in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6 and published in the Asbury Park Press on January 10, 2017, and rewrites via email on September 11, 2017.
Thanks, Katie, we're rolling, both, please.
Mayor Coles.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Miller is here. Commitment Lyndenstein.
Here.
Commitment Ackerman.
Here.
Commitment DeLeo.
Here. Move both in session. Move. A second, a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Would you please rise for a salute to the flag, remain standing for the prayer. David, you want to lead us?
Okay, I'll do it, I'm here.
A virtual allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we request to give our thanks for thy many blessings. We ask thy blessings upon this township committee and all those in authority so that they may serve the people. All this we ask in thy name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, before we get started, I just wanted to say that tonight is the first Township Committee meeting that the township is live streaming direct. We hope to expand these recordings, stream it to all open public meetings in town. For the time being, I'm sure there's gonna be some bugs in the system we need to work out. So the Township Committee meeting, 7:30 in the auditorium, will be the first. We'll move up to our conference meetings and then hopefully to some of the other boards and committees afterward, so. It's LakewoodNJ.gov, there should be a link. If you don't see the link, it's LakewoodNJ.gov/live. So with that, remember you're on camera, please be nice to us, and we'll miss you. Do you have a motion to approve the executive workshop in regular minutes of August 31st? Bill, second. You by Minashe, you by Mayor, all in favor? Aye. Close? None. All right, we'll open it up to the public. Anybody who wants to speak, please come to the microphone, make a statement and direct to the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Joyce Blay, editor slash reporter, NJ News and News, 311 floor, way, Tom for the future, 08755. Thank you. I do have several questions with regard to the meeting agenda. The first one is pertaining to resolutions. Please excuse me, I didn't open up to them, 16 and 17, which have to do with the UEZ program. Would you kindly tell me when the LDC, that's the Lakewood Development Corporation, adopted these resolutions, since sadly, they kept rescheduling their meetings after Ms. Combsa accepted a different position and a new director took her place? I understand he is becoming familiarized with his duties, but a lot of the meetings were canceled since he took the position and therefore, I did wonder when these resolutions were adopted.
September 17.
September 1.
September 1, both of them? That's last year?
Yes, September 1, 2017.
Okay, I thought you were gonna say 16, I was wondering for a moment. I do also want to say that I think it's a great idea that the Lakewood Township Committee is now videotaping their meetings. As a journalist, that's covered the township, which I consider to be the fastest-growing municipality in state. It's pleasure to be able to see township enter the digital age and offer this service to their constituents, so that they can see what goes on at the meetings, even if they can't always attend them. I would like to suggest something that I've often talked about on my blog. I hope the committee will extend this service to other meetings that are held within the municipal building, not just the governing body, but hopefully the other important boards such as planning and the zoning board, which have audio records, regrettably, unless people have covered those meetings extensively, they may not be familiar with the voices that they hear on those recordings, and this would be a great service to them. So then I commend the governing body for doing this.
And as you heard me say when we started, Joyce, all meetings will be televised once we know we have all the votes.
Great, I commend you.
Very welcome back.
Thank you.
Norin Gil, we're under two governorship ties. I want to thank you for appointing me to the Subcommittee on Density. Last two meetings were, they were really noisy. The township is turning a suburban environment into an urban metropolis. It's, when I heard the people speak last night and the night before, I was really shocked at two things. One was Mr. Flannery, he's not here to defend himself. But when I was on the Density Subcommittee, when I left before my operation, there was only three requests for rezoning. When he came up here on Monday, there was one request from 24 people, and I happen to know one of them is, but I'm not mentioning the names, because a developer went to the person and said, "If you write a letter requesting you want your properties rezoned, you can get more money for them." Their properties were great in size. Okay, it's fine, that's up to them. However, Brian came back with too many, too many things to be rezoned. And I thought back to October of 16, when the township wrote a letter and requested Mr. Atherton to write a letter and said that no increased density be allowed for any zone changes in Lakewood. Now, Mr. Flannery, I don't know if you replied to that, because I've never heard anything. And then when I went to my organizational meeting, this is what happened. One of the members said, "Density's not a problem, we just need better roads." Another one says, oh, and was very obstinate on this one, does not want a free zone density. Another one said, "People are moving to Lakewood and we have to expand." Okay. Then another person who was there, just there, public, said, "He's moving out of Lakewood, why? Because he can't travel even to Shore." He said, "When he walks to Shore on a Friday and he comes off Squonk Road, he's scared to death, because you have the traffic coming off of I-95 onto Squonk, onto Kennedy, the bottleneck at Wawan, and people are not ready to get home. If sunrise is early, then they're in trouble." Then we had another one, I will say it was myself, that said, "I went to a meeting in the county years ago, the county told the township committee, no more building on Route 9." This happened when Abe Penzer wanted to build his store there by the railroad tracks. Okay, that was the year that happened. Now, the township committee supposedly didn't tell, by the way, the planning board, because I went to the planning board and the planning board said, "Oh, no one told us." Okay, now here we are years later, and we're on this density plan, a subcommittee, and one of the members said he'd like his children to live, that we needed, we needed more homes. The other one said, "Take a ride around town and see what areas you need the density in, and try and fight areas that we don't need it in," which I did, and I'm not against density, I want you all to know that. I am not against density. When I am, oh, all ready? Okay, thank you.
Good to have you back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Faruk Lasting, 28 Empire Lane. I'm here just to follow up, Mayor, with what I spoke to you about briefly at the end of the last meeting. I live in Prospect Park. It's development on Prospect Street, a little bit past Massachusetts. There are a whole bunch of different parcels of land that have recently been developed in the area, collectively it's called Prospect Square. However, each block was the original blocks that were on the tax map, so therefore it's not a development, and each block went for its own approval, so there was never any, they were never, the developer was never required to build a community center slash shore. However, planning board kept on saying, you know, "You're going to need it, you're developing the whole area." Finally, with one of the approvals of one of the properties, there were six of them, so the fourth one, they put in there that they will build a shore. They made a developer's agreement with the township committee, they dedicated block 445, lot 9, for this shore, and they also put in there that not more than 26 COs will be given out from that whole area without their plans being approved for the shore and it being bonded for, and not more than 60 unless it's built. They're over 26. The shore has not yet been approved, the plans has not been bonded for, and they're trying to subdivide the property to squish in houses on that same property. As a neighbor, I'm concerned, it's adding more density, which nobody's happy with. Prospect is starting to turn into pine, and it's infringing on our privacy because this piece of property is right next to ours. They claim that they have adequate parking for the shore because they're saying that even though they promised the buyers that there are going to be two sanctuaries in the shore, they're saying the second one is the secondary room and therefore in the UDO they're not required to give parking, and it's kind of odd, the secondary room is the larger of the two. Even according to what they're saying, it's kind of weird how they say they're conforming with parking because they're like kind of making the whole UDO graduate its scale, that the first 800 square feet don't require, et cetera. I don't know what the common practice is, but to me it sounded very strange. We really would like, myself, my neighbors, the homeowners that purchased in Prospect Square, would like that the township enforced this, that they have a developer's agreement. I don't think that what they're doing is falls within the agreement, that they can start subdividing and only use part of it for the shore. They're not supposed to be getting more than 26. I, for a fact, have received from the township around 35 at least, and that was probably like two, three weeks ago. I don't know how, how many more have been issued. And the developer has already come before the planning board around five or six times for this. They're playing games, first they want to squish in four sets of duplexes, then the planning board said, "No way, okay, three." Now they're down to two, and now they're saying it's conforming. And the, they started hearing, there's two separate applications, a subdivision and then the approvals for the shore, that's the second one. So, they heard already the subdivision, which they're claiming is conforming, but the board held off on voting on that by the end of the last meeting, because they ran out of time and they said they want to first hear the shore. So that's coming up this Tuesday, so it's really time sensitive. I know that you had mentioned that I should meet with Mr. Henshaw, I did not have time. I did quickly send him an email today summarizing this, but I did want to come here so that the township committee can hear it as well.
I did receive your email, I forwarded it to the engineer inspection after the township attorney, yes, that's all the back to Mayor, to see how we have to go about it, I'm sure that this will be your priority.
Okay, I think that was actually from-
I'll take this afternoon, I thought you might have seen it.
Right, no, I think that was actually from an attorney representing Prospect Square. I sent one directly to Mr. Henshaw.
We are looking at it, I'll do my best to-
Okay, and you know, like I said, it's, it's time sensitive because it's Tuesday, and just as one last thing, five more seconds. It's kind of disappointing that the planning board has not taken into their calculations when they plan their schedule, the Jewish holidays. This meeting is the night before Rosh Hashanah, the next one is the night before Sukkot. I, I'm going to assume it's an oversight, but it's really something that they should focus on in the future. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, good evening, although we're now talking about ordinance number 2017, 30-35, I believe it is. Yetrak Schmidt, Red Oaks Development. Wonderful. Okay, great. Who is the person that draws the maps that get attached? Sorry?
Back to the microphone.
Who is the person that draws the maps and indicates the places on the map which are to be dedicated, prior to ordinance? Is that you, Katie?
That was just the person, tax map and then block and lot, block and lot, given we try to match it up.
Can you stop my minutes while you're talking, please?
No.
Okay, fine, I'm going to talk, but, did anybody help you in drawing up this map?
Take your hand over the mic.
Did anybody help you in drawing up the map for the ordinance accepting lot 19, lot 58.13?
No.
Okay. Did you check with the tax assessor if your rendering was correct or if it's wrong?
Okay, well, the block and lot is in there, we take the block and lot, look at the tax map, draw that.
I looked at the tax map yesterday, 2017 tax map, and your lot, your rendering is wrong. And there are a lot of people in there which are furious. It could be an error, and we'll be fine and just fix it, you know, before you go out and it's not. But this is going to become probably part of the record, Mr. Henshaw, Mr. Seekar, that it's important that the rendering be correct. The rendering shows only half of the lot that was, that's supposed to be dedicated is accepted, and it's wrong, and we are arguing strongly, not for the wetlands, but for the park which is out of your circle. So I can show you maps and you can get a chance to fix it before the second, you know, reading. If you'd like, we can recess it because I know this is, this is extremely important, we can recess five minutes and go upstairs with the maps and I'll show it to you. I have all the maps here with me, I have all the, you know, letters and the exchanges, and this is really, really important, you know, there's mistakes that we made, and I, I appreciate that, and I make mistakes too. But it doesn't mean mistake on this, you have several dozen people on our neighbor email group right now which are freaking out, literally, okay? And they're hoping that there's nothing nefarious, and I'm, and Asher told me there's nothing nefarious about this, but when we see this kind of mistake, it just makes us really nervous.
I assure you, it was a simple mistake, if it is a mistake, we, I could take a look at it, but-
Okay, so I'd like to look at it before the second meeting on this ordinance, because I'd like it to happen tonight. Can you please recess it for five minutes so Katie can have a look at it and fix the error? You've done, you've recessed in the past.
Not right now.
So you're going to hold, are you going to vote on this the way it's depicted, because this is wrong?
When you finish speaking, I'm going to ask Mayor Kerry what the proper procedure to read, whatever he writes, I'm going to follow.
Okay. Great, keep doing what you're saying, we'll be right there, bye. Thank you.
I mean, I think that if it's an error, this is a comparison, non-genuine usual course which is just clarification, who needs to change it?
Can't hear you. Can't hear you.
The lawyer, the lawyer's got to take the mic.
I'll check with Katie, but I don't see the problem, we just clarify initially, give it to the city.
That'll be fine with us.
Next speaker.
Kind of similar to Weinberg, a resident of Caronetta Drive, right here in Lakewood. I'm here about acute safety issue on our street, starting about 7:30, 8 o'clock every morning to probably somewhere around 9:30, 10 o'clock, because of the traffic backing up on, on Central, which goes at least to Sunset. We've got cars coming off Sunset every day, trying to speed to the front of the line, which is at the end of Caronetta, going to Route 9. And I would say, I feel comfortable telling you that one out of 10 are going well past the speed limit, probably three out of 10 going certainly over the speed limit. There's only two things that are on the street right now as it turns, there are two, two speeding signs, they both say 25 miles an hour. I think everybody would agree with me, when people see speeding signs, they translate an, by another 5, 10, 15 miles per hour. But I'm talking about a severe and acute safety issue. Three times we've had cars, because Caronetta is a windy, very, kind of racetrack, especially where I live. I live right at the very last turn going towards Central. So, the car starts speeding off Sunset or Davis, wherever, but right before my ha, my turn is a, just a straightaway, and they pick up speed. Three times I've had cars literally on my driveway, in my front lawn, they hit a tree, it hit my car, thank God the car was there, because my children playing basketball on my driveway. Today, I had my, I took my daughter waiting for the bus to come on Freeman and Central, and a car came and literally hit the curb and could easily come up on the curb and going for, without a doubt, 40, 50 miles an hour. So, I have a petition on that sign, and I'm asking the committee to just, I know stop signs are an issue, I have called the mayor's office a few times about this, I've spoken to Sergeant Work also quite a few times over the last 15 years I've been living there, and nothing ever gets done. I'm asking for just simple signs. What I would think would be a greater deterrent, something to affect this area patrolled by radar, I think something in the, some paint on the street, slow or something like that, but it has to be something more than just two stop signs on that street. It's, it's a very severe safety issue, we've got children on the street, and I think we're, we're looking for trouble there. I, this is not just, I don't care about the traffic, I understand the psychology of wanting to get by the traffic and get to the front of the line, but I don't understand is not doing something about to at least deter the drivers from driving well, well, over the speed, double the speed limit on a very windy road. And by the time they get to my turn, it's like a go-kart track. It's a severe left-hand turn and they don't realize it. And that's why that might, that's why they end up in my driveway three different times on my lawn. So I'm asking the committee to please, in a very short period of time, to at least have one or two signs on there that are deterrent to have, to have people slow down. I know we can't stop them from coming on the street, I'm, no, nobody has a problem with that, but everybody on the street knows that this is a severe safety issue for individuals and children and so on, so please, I'm asking for, thank you.
Sorry, sir, can you give an address again?
Weinberg, 32 Caronetta Drive, Lakewood, New Jersey. I hope to be submitting this petition, but, but half the residents have already signed it, I haven't been able to get to the other ones, time issue, they've been away and so on and so forth, but I hope you'll be able to get some.
Please ask the chief, is he under enforcement there as well?
I, I would tell you that I've met with an officer recently and I've spoken to him, and very nice, always wanting to help, and they're all telling me they already know what a severe safety issue it is, but nothing ever gets done. Putting a police car there, I would tell you just quickly, I don't go to my office and call snack every day, and there's a little strip there that, that goes from 45 to 25. And you wouldn't realize it, but the residents obviously complained because for a period of time, the officers were bullying people, even my own wife got pulled over and the officer said, "I don't even realize this, but it goes from 45 to 25, please make sure you're aware of it in the future." And there's a, a sign right before you get to the zone that says, "This area patrolled by radar."
Sorry, sir, I'm just, when members of the public speak, we can't have the candidate person speaking, there's a lot of people, sorry.
As a driver, I, we know that nobody really pays so close attention to un, on, to speed limit signs that there isn't a police officer and all the other ones, but, you know, radar is something that people think might be coming from the stars or somewhere, so I think that's a great deterrent. And they pull people over for a period of time with that kind of a sign, I think people will be aware. Thank you very much.
Sir?
Yes.
Can I ask specifically if I'm going to report?
Sure.
I'm watching it happen, we'll give it up at this point.
Hi, Chaya Mertz, 37, San Sanwood, Lakewood. I wanted to talk about a few things. One of them is there's an ordinance for second reading. It's ordinance number five for the second readings of the Lakewood Township, Rosh Hashanah State, New Jersey, lot 11, lot 12, lot 62, Pinesville Drive. This is right near my house, when I walk on my front door, I see this piece of property. I called up a lot of other residents in Westgate, some of them were unaware of this, some of them had concerns about this, why is it open up for public sale, what's the use, what's going to be utilized for, is it going to be something that's inventoried communities, is it something that possibly should be dedicated as open space? As we all know, I've reviewed it many times, the plans from 1998 of Westgate, they don't leave so much open space, so, and didn't have enough shores, so they just wanted the request that we push this all, have time to discuss it with the neighbors, with the community, with the township, with the committee members, and figure out, do what's best for the community, and-
I'm pretty glad to see you brought this to us earlier tonight, and I think that's what the plan is, is to hold up on this, and we're under the impression that this is what the folks in Westgate wanted to do over there, because it's been a long, ongoing process, but again, to hear from a number of people. Mayor came to me just as I came into my, he said, "Do you want to, do you carry it or do you want it dying and start over again?"
I don't, I, I don't want to let it die, but what I had said was that members of the public, okay, I told you earlier, this was brought to us by, by a family who wanted to use it to host people on weekends. I was, I spoke to them and asked them to date members of the community, which I know that they did because I got a lot of calls about it. One of the synagogues there, it's a private public sale on property, which I'm going to provide, reported to us as well, and my intention was if nobody was going to come up to speak, then we'll go for sale, but if there's actually opposition, I would say maybe we carry it for one meeting, unless we hear something different, I'd like, you know, you're open to public session. Okay, yes, that would be, because I spoke to a number of people, not all of them could make it, but they really wanted, at least carry it, I've not discussed. The second thing I wanted to discuss was, again, in Westgate, the South Side Boulevard, I looked at the pines originally years ago, it was very strict that they were supposed to make it, that it shouldn't be used as a thoroughfare. There's supposed to be controlled intersections, there's supposed to be a lot of waviness in it in order to discourage speed. Unfortunately, whether it was done properly or not, it's not being effective. I wait to pull out sometimes, you look both ways and then you make a left, and then you almost get into a car accident because somebody's going 16 miles an hour on Hillside Boulevard. Now, besides for the fact that you cause a car accident, there's also children. Driving through a place with over 2,500, possibly as high as 5,000 children who cross that street, and people going constant, consistently 50 to 60 miles an hour, it's a serious, serious acute safety concern. I'll give you an example, you know, near the public school, 7th Street is very wide there, and it's a nice big street coming out of the narrow park, and people would really pull it up to 60 miles an hour if they could, what they do there? They put those low-rise speed bumps. So now, nobody goes cruising in there, can you imagine if those aren't there, people would pull through there the same way? Assuming it was John Franklin, somebody told me who had put speed bumps there, I think that's something if the township could look into or direct it to the right department, because it's, I don't want to say the words, but it's, it's, it's a technical problem there. That's it. Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I ask Sergeant Work, looking for some traffic coming over there?
You will, I'll start, just, just for the record, Mayor, I don't think these are part of the things that speed laws and such, I think people just, you know-
We have a lot of pushback on those, especially in the fire department at one time, just concerns about the trucks, and those are actually probably just 16, 18 years since they were put in, I think it was in the last month I was putting, it's more of a issue than a rate. But there are other ways-
Oh, yeah, there are other methods to really, because if you just watch it, it could, your heart, your heart's in the-
It's not the whole time, right?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Good evening. Avram Schubert, 18, Gaffin Drive. There's a few people of our neighborhood who came out tonight. Our neighborhood feels we're under assault, be it with the planning and master zone redevelopment of Burnside Avenue, be it of the flowing white milk, and I'm coming here tonight to personally thank Mayor Coles, because as you know, we've been having correspondence, myself and a few others in our development, and you've always responded positively. And whatever you told us, that's what occurred, and we're very thankful for you, for what you've done for us and you're looking out for us, and we all appreciate it very much. And I'm, and I'm sure this little slip up in this map will be resolved, and it'll be all resolved and everyone will be happy, we'll have a playground that the way it was supposed to be. For next week's Rosh Hashanah, I just wanted to thank you and have a wonderful year, and hopefully next year, we'll be able to make many people in Lakewood happy. Until you get back, I hope to play your act there. Thank you.
Jerry Grop Ballwin, Governor's Road. At the last meeting, I had mentioned a concern that I had, that in different places, attorneys for legal notices for planning and zoning board weren't putting down the addresses, they were just using lot and block, and even the township committee at the last meeting on the agenda, where you were going to have readings on first reading on the land sales, you didn't list the address, you just listed lot and block. I do notice you do have now a reference to some streets that show where these lot and blocks are located, so I thank you for that, that, you know, this is for transparency, and in fact, even last meeting, of the three, only, there was only one map posted, the other two properties had no maps. So I did look up and, you know, was able to see ahead of time, you know, like where these properties were located. But anyway, I was not able to attend any of the master plan public hearings, and I was able to catch some of them online from First Amendment activists. And there was one gentleman the other day had tried to get up and ask some questions, but he was told that you cannot ask questions of the planning board, you can only make a statement. I mean, there's over 300 pages of the master plan, and how is somebody supposed to, you know, have all of the answers if you can't ask a question of the planning board, only quote, "Make a statement." So I kind of thought that was really unfair of the way that they were being approached at the meeting. The other thing was, the man was saying, "Well, okay, I own land, and how do I know how I can develop it? What do I look at? Do I look at this master plan that things weren't-" Do I look at this master plan that things weren't approved? Do I go back to the previous master plan? You know, what do I know that, how do I know how I can develop my land?" And of course, there was the, an attempt with the Smart Growth Plan. And I think in theory, the Smart Growth Plan has, it's, you know, okay, it sounds good. But somehow, in its implementation in Lakewood, it's just falling apart. And of course, looking at one of the maps of the land for sale, you're dealing with now with a triangle. And on your master, in the Smart Growth Plan of page 16, there was a beautiful area that was supposed to be public use, open space, parkland, a small place for townhouses. Well, this is all things that have gone to pot. You have a lot more for multifamily than what's shown on here. And where is the public use? This blue spot. And that blue spot is off of Massachusetts, which comes off of Edwards. And what do we have there that's public use? There was supposedly a firing range for the police department. Somehow, you guys sold it and you didn't know that this is the firing range for the police department. Public use? Well, it's no longer public use. I guess it's getting into townhouses. And what else is over there but the fire tower that's in the highest part of the land, I guess in Lakewood, over on Massachusetts? And you're going to be trying to sell some of that land in a short time, which I will be protesting. Because here's the thing for smart growth, and everybody is ignoring it. Ignore everything for open space. Let's dig in more and more housing and density. So, you know, smart growth has been, being called stupid growth at this point in time. Anyway, I did want to thank you for the one thing you did do. We have to have transparency and if you're going to be starting with your videotaping of the meetings, this should have been a long time ago, started, that we didn't have to have a private citizen feel that he needed to go and take these meetings. So I don't like to be on TV or whatever, but, you know, if this is going to be better for the township with transparency, go for it. Thank you.
Does zoning and planning board attorneys, or requested that they make sure that addresses you put out, any notices where possible, if there's an exact address or location, laying out where they go.
Well, it should be. Thank you.
A few months ago, I asked when you're going to start building the park on East 9th and Lawrence. And someone mentioned that the neighborhood might not want it. I spoke to several people who live in that neighborhood and I asked them what, about that. And they said they never got any, nobody ever spoke to them about it. And I also wonder, what does it mean that if you're not putting a park? Are you putting industrial zone? Are you putting in houses? Are you putting in stores? Like what, access? They would rather have a park than all these other things because it's not going to cause as much traffic as all these other things. And I also wonder why you mean neighborhood doesn't want it because no one was, none of the people I spoke to were ever notified.
The committee got their request for East 9th not to put a park there.
I did. Nothing was set up as a traffic instance, but I did. People in their neighborhood spoke to me.
Okay.
So I think, if you're trying to ask that question, I don't think we're doing anything at this point.
The vast majority of that property to be left is open space. A lot of it's wet, which don't intend to do anything in a small parcel. There's the actual public works building stood at one point in time, but there are absolutely no plans to do anything with it at this point in time. Before we do anything with it, we want to give the board a final as well. We were kind of taken back when we suggested park. And people said that they didn't want it. I didn't get the conversation, but your committee members came back to me and said that there was pushback about it. I had the same problem with my neighborhood. We had a little parcel picked out. Some of the neighbors came to me and said, "We want to have a park over here." I worked with public works and all of a sudden, a lot of other people came up and said, "No, we don't want a park here."
Okay.
It sounds like a great idea, but the space is going to be left green, so that's important.
Okay. And another thing is that yesterday at the master plan, which I actually didn't go, but I heard about it, somebody came up and said, "The density is very nice. They live on Ridge. It's great. It's great." It's very nice for that person to live, to choose to live on Ridge in a very dense place. But I happen to know someone, she was looking at two shacks, one off Yale and one off Arlington. And she decided that she's going to buy the one off Yale because she did not want to live in Arlington. She saw at that point, it was not full duplexes, but it was turning into duplexes. And she wanted to live in a neighborhood that has a front yard, backyard, side yard. And now she's like, "Very nice. I choose to live in such a neighborhood. And now you're going to come and tell me who you don't even live? The density is so nice. If I want to live in a dense area, I would have booked in a dense area." So that's just, I'd say that.
Thanks very much. All right, seeing nobody else, we'll close the public portion. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anybody would like to remove?
I'm just going to understand what's said.
All right. Anything else? If not, we have a motion in the second. A motion, motion by Minaj, a second, second by Isaac. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Committeeman Ackerman.
Yes.
Committeeman Delia.
Yes.
Committeeman Lincolnstein.
Yes, I'm on the side seats.
Deputy Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Coles.
Yes. Will this be the second reading?
Order City Township Lakewood County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the public sale of lot 443, lot 1, in southeast corner of Massachusetts Avenue and Gravesend Street, which is a paper street niche. In the township Lakewood County of Ocean State, New Jersey, open public sale pursuant to N J S and 48, 12, and 11, 12.
So for the meeting to the public, anybody wish to be heard?
Jerry Ballins, Governor's Road. This is one of the properties I had referenced before regarding how it was supposed to go, regarding the smart growth concept. It was supposed to be used for public use. It is near, I believe, the fire tower. I think this land should be kept in the township hands. It should be kept as open space. And again, you know, it's, anything that is done with the planning board, with master plan or smart growth, it doesn't really become, I understand, finalized until you gentlemen make it into an ordinance and you have officially zoned the land to be that. And of course, somewhere along the line that, I guess, that became multifamily. And while it's very, while lucrative, you can maybe get $600,000 for, but I think it's maybe not worth it to do that, that some of that, that land should really try to be kept as open space. I see also that there was a reference that, there was references something to smart growth plan and there could be changes made. So again, if you sell it at this price, you know, I don't think it should be sold for anything, but maybe the township is losing out on money because maybe if it's rezoned by somebody, it could be more valuable than $600,000. So we're going to be short-changed. Or if it's downgraded, somebody is paying maybe too much money for it. So perhaps this should be held off until finalization of the master plan is done. My point.
Blausdine, 28 Empire Lane. This piece of property also is in the same area. And it's very concerning to me because anybody who's trying to get onto Massachusetts, they're going to be making the left, they're going across traffic. There's a whole development that's going upright over there, Prospect Corner, which is by the corner of Massachusetts and Prospect. The county light over there just blinks. The traffic is horrible over there. Traffic has already increased because of the numerous developments on Prospect, past Massachusetts, Prospect Square, Prospect Vine. We're getting plenty of other developments over there. And that's just a blinking light. Traffic backs up. And even without it, it's a very hard angle to see. And I'm concerned how people are going to be making lefts over here on Massachusetts. There's the hill over there also. I'm not sure what the angle is. So if it's being sold and there's going to be housing over there, it's a disaster. It's probably best, some piece of property the township just leaving for open space.
Anybody else close the public hearing?
A motion for, uh...
On that same ordinance?
I don't know specifically about the ordinance. I just wanted to...
That's what you have to comment on. It's not covered by the ordinance.
It's about Massachusetts Avenue. With that...
It got to do with this ordinance that we're talking about?
Yeah. It could, it could affect the ordinance. I don't know. Should have bring it to your attention. I've witnessed Joseph Goldberg, 20 Taylor Street. I drive around Lakewood a lot, nature of my work, and I've noticed very close near accidents happening on Massachusetts Avenue specifically, where there is a hump in the road. I think the speed limit's around 40 miles an hour. If the speed limit was adjusted to a slower speed, that could prevent near accidents or accidents if they happened in the past. I wanted to bring that to the board's attention. Thank you.
Now we'll close the public hearing on this ordinance. Mayor, you have something you wanted to say?
I'll move into public. This is a discussion.
Is it by Mayor, second by Minaj? Discussion?
Mayor, it's interesting, I'm not referring to the traffic safety as far as the speed is concerned, which is something that we should speak about, traffic safety, you know, about. This, this request actually came to us for a, for a synagogue. That's the person that requested it for a public use, similar to on a shooting range, hopefully. But it's a, it is a public use and that is what the master plan calls it out for. And like Mr. Blaustein spoke about before, there is a need for schools in the neighborhood. If you look at it, it's a 501(c)(3). It's limited to a nonprofit use. And that's where that request came from. Interestingly enough, to address it, Mr. Ballins said that we did not know the price. We put it out at $600,000. I do not know that anybody is going to vote on it, I mean, did on it. But because of exactly what Mr. Ballins said, that's what we discussed throughout the committee, that's why we put it out at that price so that taxpayers should not feel that the price was lowered on the property and somebody else take advantage of it. It's going for full price for a public use, nonprofit use. So I would be, I for one would be in favor of doing this. And then if nobody bids on it because the price is too high, we could always consider what we want to do at that point.
Thanks, Mayor. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Committeeman Ackerman.
Yes.
Committeeman Delia.
Yes.
Committeeman Lincolnstein.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Coles.
Yes. Ordinance two.
Ordinance of the township Lakewood County of Ocean State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter two entitled, "Administration of the Revised general ordinances of the township Lakewood," specifically section 2-12.5, tax assessor.
Well, for me, to the public on this ordinance only, anybody wish to be heard? Seeing nobody will close the public hearing? Move by Minaj.
Second.
Second by Mayor. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Committeeman Ackerman.
Yes.
Committeeman Delia.
Yes.
Committeeman Lincolnstein.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Coles.
Yes. Ordinance number three.
Ordinance of the township Lakewood County of Ocean State, New Jersey, accepting the dedication of property known as block 190, lot 58.13, Sheeman Street.
Thanks. Before I open the meeting to the public, Steve?
Yes, sir.
If there was, if there was an error on the depiction of this lot on the map, does that have any effect on...
No, I discussed this, Mayor, with Harold.
That's the mic.
Yeah, I discussed this with Harold. It matters to itself.
Mike, that there you are. Mike, there you are.
I'm here. This doesn't work.
You can't hear me. You can yell at me. Give me a second.
I discussed this with Harold. The map pictured itself doesn't mean anything, but it's recorded mechanic, it's going to be recorded in the ordinance itself. So the map is almost irrelevant. It's just a constructional purpose. So it's nothing to be concerned about.
This lot and block covers everything that was supposed to be dedicated to the tax estate. No question whatsoever about that.
Not at our mind, it's not.
In fact, if the map might be incorrect, it's irrelevant to the fact it's only used for purposes of people to have an idea of what the ordinance of what property it's about.
Really just the most...
If the map wasn't included with the ordinance, it would have only been...
And it's one sheet of the tax map. There's several sheets or a second sheet that covers the bulk of that property.
Okay. So with that being said, open the meeting to the public. Name and address for the record.
Yotchuk Schmidt, Red Oaks Development. Do I sound more calm now?
You do, but don't hold the mic and just speak a little bit further back. I want people to understand what you're saying.
Thank you. I'd just like to, first of all, just add something to Mr. Speaker's advice to you. Mr. Speaker, the statute reads as follows. "A copy of any ordinance resolution, cetera, establishing the boundaries lined out, accepting the dedication of, widening, straightening, extending, or changing in any manner the location of any street or highway or portions thereof of any square, beach, or other public place, together with a map showing the location, bounds, and dimensions thereof, shall, after the passage of say, be filed in the office wherein conveyances of lands are recorded in the county in which the municipality is situated." So a map is important. It is integral part of the ordinance. I've in fact, I've taken a look at the books of dedications and maps are part of what needs to be filed as part of the record. But you also need to add the meets and bounds and dimensions. And if you get all that in there, then we should be okay. Just...
That's my point. Don't worry about the map. The record needs some bounds and flow.
Okay. I'm just reading the statute as the word map, so...
I just can't be saying, we're pretty positive. We hold the record to the map.
As long as we get what we were promised, we're good. And I'll be sounding a little more calm. Yeah, I just, when I walked in, I heard one of the commentators talk about block 445, lot 9, I believe it was. Was that the block? Yeah. So what was interesting to me that block 445, lot 9 is owned by a corporation that the township manager was very interested about and required about. Mr. Anshul, you want to know who owns Diamond Triumph Properties? Diamond Triumph Properties is owned by the...
You have to keep it on this particular...
It is particular. Please, please allow me to finish. It's owned by the same person that owns Flowing White Milk. Check it out. The person who owns Flowing White Milk, I guess, is trying several different methods of getting his hands on this property. I know that he sent them a letter for the exchange of lands. I know Minaj showing it to everybody. And I don't know if it's an arms length, you know, kind of request because Diamond Triumph Properties is trying to exchange that lot over there, which Mr. Blaustine here has an issue with, for our lot. I believe that was the request for, you know, block 190, lot 58.13. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's, you know, that's the information I have. It's owned by the same person, so please, don't allow any exchange of that land. That letter request was brought in, I think, at the August 10th workshop. Just make sure that the neighbor where Mr. Blaustine lives is not taken advantage of. And that's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you so much.
Anybody else want to be heard on this ordinance? Anybody else want to be heard on this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I ask a question? Um, just perhaps?
A question?
No. A few, uh, you might not want to continue the public session. You know, this, this, uh, idea of putting the pictures and the addresses and circling the map, um, is done, is done to help the public, and, and I don't, I believe that Kate made an honest mistake, and Kate, I apologize to you and your young counterparts for that. Um, we're doing this for the neighborhood that's here. It seems like the neighborhood doesn't want it done tonight, so why would we do it? Why don't we just push it off, wait for the next map to age long, do it so that everybody's a hundred percent... Well, I'm not sure why, if the neighborhood doesn't want it, and they ask for it, so why would we do it? I, I might be missing something. I don't know if you would understand.
Well, Steve, I always tell Mr. Smith, what about having the map for us? The map that is shown on this ordinance for the public is not the map that will be filed as the name, correct?
I don't mean that we can have to, you know, file the maps. You can have to file them.
No, there's actually a subdivision map that's filed, that dedicates the dedication...
Mike. We're on camera now, Harold.
There's a regular subdivision map on file that dedicates this first, purpose of this ordinance was to memorialize that dedication.
The map that Mr. Smith's talking about is the map that's in possession of the county now.
It's already there. It's filed, it's, it is filed at the courthouse, yes.
So, when we're talking about filing the map, we're not talking about filing the map that's with this ordinance?
I don't know the discussion, in case what, what the speaker said. The references are to the filed map, the references are to the lot and block, if you pick it on that filed map, that is what is being accepted by the dedication. So I feel comfortable that we are okay with it. We're doing several things with regard to it, and recording it with the dedications as well, but, or with the dedication, 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 dedication. But I feel comfortable that we are, and I don't like the idea of delaying it, and that's for other purposes, that, uh, we can't discuss it.
I feel as far as I can, just like you said, there's one mistake, because when the neighborhood's asking us for it, some people are not happy with what's here. I don't want to vote on it, and then find out, oh, if it's right, and we're a hundred percent sure it's right, and the neighborhood's comfortable filing. They're not, I don't want to wait. But if you're telling me it's one hundred percent, it's not going to come back, you missed this, you swapped this, you tried it, okay?
Thanks.
Yeah, Jerry Bolins, Governor's Road. I guess the question I have is where it says, whereas Kedma One Inc. never formally finalized the dedication of the land by execution of a deed. How does that happen, that it's not followed up, that something is supposed to be done, and it's not done? And then this problem arose where the land got, I guess, sold or something? I don't know. But how do these mistakes occur, and how do we prevent that from happening?
In the past, the tax, the previous tax assessor would put open space in a development on the tax laws, and if that happened, the developer turned everything over to a homeowners association. And once that was done, she would delude it on the tax laws. How we ran the problem to the Joe Parker Road and Clubhouse, so we're out of that. That is no longer done. The developments are put before us, current tax assessor takes all the open space, all common property, and lists it as a tax exempt, part of the common property or the development. So we don't run into those problems anymore. I don't know why back then, I can't tell you, Jerry, that was a screw-up, but thank us all for the faults in the neighborhood, pointing it out to us, showed us actually, a case law that we could use to follow it, that's exactly what we did. So we're formally accepting that dedication tonight, the property will go back to them, it will become the park and the playground they wanted for these years.
So, right, so...
It's an extension.
Yeah, so if these residents, homeowners, were asleep, then this would have been possibly developed eventually, if they didn't wake up and say, "Something is wrong."
It's possible, I'd like to think you would have voted, but very happy that they did. I apologize to them for the aggravation, the stress you had to go over because of this. And like I said, we are, we're taking care of it for you tonight.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on this ordinance? Seeing nobody, close the public hearing, and have a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
Move by mayor, second by Minaj. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Committeeman Ackerman.
Yes.
Committeeman Delia.
Yes.
Committeeman Linkenstein.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Coles.
Yes. Thank you for your questions. All right, ordinance two.
Ordinance is for first reading. Ordinance of the...
Guys, if you're going to leave, please leave quietly. The camera picks up your conversations still, I want people to hear what you're saying.
I'm sorry, second reading. That's okay. Second reading, number four. Orders of the Towns of Lakewood County of Ocean State in New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled, "Orders of the Towns of Lakewood County of Ocean State in New Jersey, authorizing the updated township personnel policies and procedures manual, and creating the Department of Human Resources."
Katie, open the meeting to the public. Would anybody like to be heard on this ordinance only? Seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing.
I'll move it, I'll second.
Move by mayor, second by Minaj. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Committeeman Ackerman.
Yes.
Committeeman Delia.
Committeeman...
Committeeman Linkenstein.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Coles.
Yes. Are we going to carry this next ordinance now?
Can I, can I ask if, um, I know there's one person who was opposed.
We'll go to the public hearing, or not?
Yeah, let's just...
I hope for the public hearing on this ordinance only. If anybody'd like to be heard, please come forward. But order, you're right.
Orders of the Towns of Lakewood County of Ocean State in New Jersey, authorizing the public sale of portion of block eleven point one two, block sixty-two of the Towns of Lakewood County of Ocean State in New Jersey, looking for public sale pursuant to an ordinance with NJS and forty-eight, hole in twelve dash one, et cetera. It's on Kingsfield Drive.
Is, is that what you meant?
Can I ask you a question? Before, before you start, are you, do you want us to hold up on some of this?
Um, my biggest problem with this ordinance is number, uh, D, number three. It says, "The property is being sold subject of existing zoning. However possessed, speakers should be aware that township is adopting a smart growth plan which could require future changes in zoning for the property. A copy of the smart growth plan can be reviewed at the office of township clerk." Does that mean that in a few years, someone could come up here and say, "We want to put a house or ten houses here instead of the nonprofit thing that this place is being sold for?"
These restrictions stays with the property.
May I make a motion to, uh...
Hold on, do you want to be heard on this as well? I know you came in. We're gonna, but mayor, we're hoping to make somebody else.
I spoke before, is there a reason to say that?
Close the meeting to the public.
Sorry, may, please, may I ask us to see if there was anybody who had requests to us to sell it, that wanted to speak about whether we should sell it, that's why I was here.
Seeing nobody, public hearing's closed.
When's our next meeting?
October eighteenth.
So, can I, mayor, with your permission, can I make a motion to carry this on October eighteenth?
You're second. Second by Isaac. Motion by mayor, second by Isaac, carrying this ordinance to the eighteenth of October. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Committeeman Ackerman.
Yes.
Committeeman Delia.
Yes.
Committeeman Linkenstein.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Coles.
Yes.
Ordinance is for first reading.
Yep.
An ordinance of the Towns of Lakewood County of Ocean State in New Jersey, authorizing the conveyance and execution of a deed of easement for installation of utility equipment to New House Properties LLC. The owner of block one sixty-nine, lot thirty-three point oh one, within a portion of the park placed right of way.
Remotion? Okay. Move by Minaj. Second by Mike. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Committeeman Ackerman.
Yes.
Committeeman Delia.
Yes.
Committeeman Linkenstein.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller.